We're going to open this meeting in honor and memory of Ernie Morales, our former council member and mayor of the city of Fillmore, who passed away a week ago from Sunday, or a week past Sunday. So I just thought I'd start with that. Albert, would you lead us in the pledge?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to read something to the end of the record. A meeting attendance pursuant to state law, can't even see, might have gone blind today. 5493-5B, Councilmember Chris Garola will attend the meeting via phone at 211 East Fourth Street, entrance 3G02, entrance, apartment number 2110, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The meeting agenda will be posted in this location, which is open to the public more than 24 hours before the meeting. Any interested member of the public may join Councilmember Chris Garola at this location. Georgie, will you take a roll call, please?
Councilmember Garola?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem v. Senor?
Here.
Mayor Austin?
Here.
Councilmember Brogie?
Here.
Councilmember Mendez?
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four, approval agenda. If I could entertain a motion?
Sure, so moved.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion as second. Georgie, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Garola?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem v. Senor?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brogie?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to item number five, 5A, safe ways to navigate social media presented by Detective Sergeant Aaron Grass and Detective Catherine Torres.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Aaron Grass. I'm with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office. I currently manage the sexual assault unit in the Major Crimes Bureau. We do sexual assault investigations and internet crimes against children. I have with me Detective Katie Torres. She's going to be presenting to you guys on this topic today.
Good evening, thank you for having us. Again, my name is Catherine Torres. I work with the Sheriff's Office as one of the detectives in our sex crimes unit. And I'm also a task force officer with one of our FBI task forces for the Ventura County Child Exploitation Human Trafficking Task Force. So I wanted to come here today to talk about just some of the safe ways to navigate social media. With school starting back up, a lot of things that we need to be reminded of are just kind of refreshers, and I kind of just wanted to explain to the community and to yourselves about some of the things that detectives will encourage as far as how to handle our children when it comes to social media. So with that being said, some of the things that I want to cover in the PowerPoint are going to be what is child abuse? What is child sexual abuse material? How do we speak to our children about this topic? Because we know it's a sensitive subject. And then how, again, are we navigating social media? With the social media coming about in our society nowadays, it's an ever-evolving thing. So, and then how do we go about reporting that and resources that are available to victims? So going over child endangerment, child abuse, I listed some of the very common penal codes that we deal with a lot when it comes to crimes involving children. One of the reminders that I wanted to put in there is in reference to mandated reporters. Who are our mandated reporters? Who has a obligation to say something and speak up when they see something like a child endangerment or an assault of a child where something occurs and maybe that child is put in danger? Who's reporting this? So as a mandated reporter, there's nine different categories. You are a mandated reporter if you are a childcare custodian, so this is teachers. If you're a health practitioner, medical and non-medical. Animal control officers, constantly going into homes within our public, they're going to be some of our frontline responders into seeing a situation that they might think a child could be in danger. Humane Society officers, employees who are CPS or CFS workers, child visitation monitors, again, that's a huge role that these employees are taking on when they're monitoring visitations. Are they seeing signs? Are the children okay? Are things being said? Or are we missing clues that might be there? Firefighters, clergy, commercial film processors. Commercial film processors, again, kind of not as common nowadays, especially with the way technology is advancing. Our phones aren't, you know, we're not really developing film nowadays, but they still are required to report if they feel that a child is in danger. Common types of internet crimes against children. So this is commonly known as ICAC within our community. You may have heard terms such as like kiddie porn or CSAM. And so internet crimes against children. A lot of the cases that we investigate in our sex crimes unit, and this is countywide, are going to be based online. This is our children using their cell phones, being on social media, having access to that through their friends. It comes down to Nintendos, being in chat rooms, being contacted by people. For instance, and this is just a personal story, is one of my children was on Roblox, and you have group chats on there. So, you know, I deleted that because I was like, yeah, we're not going to enter into this. So some of the things that we investigate as far as internet crimes is going to be online child enticement, child exploitation, the manufacturing, distribution of porn, travelers. This is maybe where an adult is agreeing to meet up with a child, and maybe they're going to travel to meet for that child. Sexually explicit conversations such as sexting, things along those lines that are being used through internet-based apps for texting. These are going to be all categorized as child sexual abuse. And a lot of these cases are occurring, unfortunately, within a lot of our community's homes. If your child has access to some type of portal through the internet or social media, there's a high propensity that they could be at risk for being exploited. So how do we talk to our youth about this? There are a lot of resources out there, but I kind of wanted to break down as far as age groups. So some of the things that we suggest is if you have your three to five-year-old at home, the conversations need to start within our homes. The education has to start there. Parents have to be comfortable with talking to their children about what is right and what is not right. So for if you have a three to five-year-old. Unfortunately, at this age, a lot of sexual predators will target children that they have access to. So the children are going to more than likely know who their molester is or who the predator is in their life. And what these predators do is they work on exploiting this trust and creating a relationship with that child. So we like to encourage, and when we talk to a lot of victims and a lot of families and do community presentations, we like to encourage what's kind of called the My Body Safe Touch. If your bathing suit is on, nobody touches anything that your bathing suit covers. And it's putting that into the minds of our children. Using proper terminology is very important. A lot of the interviews that we do with victims, you're talking to a victim, and maybe they don't know the proper term for what their private parts might be. They might refer to as like my flower or my cookie. So it's making sure that your child is knowing what the proper terms and terminology is for the parts of their body. Moving on to our six to nine year olds. Again, most children begin being sexually abused at this age, and children struggle with boundaries. This is the phase where they're going through acceptance, learning, making friends, going into schools, starting school. And so this is where you really want to try and teach your child permission about stepping into someone's circle, setting up their own boundaries, being okay with telling someone to like, hey, back off, I'm not comfortable. So discussing with your child also at this age what an unsafe secret is versus a surprise. So making sure that you're involved in your child's life to not put them in situations where people want to go tell them secrets. Having those open conversations with your child, again, about, hey, we don't keep secrets in this house. We tell each other everything. And getting them be able to be comfortable talking to you about that. For our 10 to 13 year olds, this is where conversations might begin about having sex and healthy relationships. Our children obviously see the relationships that occur within our house. They know the difference between healthy relationships and maybe a non-healthy relationship. They know that through watching TV, through seeing mom and dad living in the house, or whomever the couples are that are in their house. And then also talking to your children about social media and schools and how they can be targeted. Talk about the dangers of pornography and how to respond if shown it. Other children will show your children pornography. We have eight-year-olds, six-year-olds who have access to porn on their phones. They don't know exactly what it is, but it's very easy to get to YouTube and get down those types of rabbit holes. So being comfortable talking to your child and, again, having those open conversations with them. For our 14 to 18-year-olds, a lot of times, I've worked with victim service providers for the last five years very closely. And a lot of the things that they preach as far as it comes to any type of victim or to our youth in our community is empowering them to be in control of their own body. This is the age where consent starts to come into play. Social media dangers are the most rampant as far as being in dating relationships, maybe sending pictures to your boyfriend, girlfriend, or whomever it is that you're dating. And what we want to do is make sure that we're giving our children tools for success, to be open about the conversations, to be responsible, to, again, talk about what exactly is a healthy relationship. Should somebody be telling you, if you don't do this for me, then it means you don't love me. It's probably not the best example of a healthy relationship. So it's teaching our children what a healthy relationship looks like. In this category, I kind of wanted to switch a little bit over to what it is about the internet. Social media apps, those are everywhere. Kids have access to Instagram, Facebook. I have seen eight, nine-year-olds having Instagrams and Facebooks. So as a parent, what is your rights when it comes to these phones? You can look through the phones. You're paying for the phone bill? Look through your kid's phones. Making sure who that is that they're talking to. When it comes to the social media apps, manage those. Set time limits. Hey, you can be on Instagram for, you know, the next 30 minutes, and then it's homework time. Profiles to private. This is probably one of the biggest ones that I deal with a lot, is our traffickers, exploiters, predators will reach out to kids who don't have private accounts. I do a lot of training at the high schools, and I talk to them all the time about having those private accounts. We see that a lot of our children use social media as an outlet for frustrations or things that they're going through. They will post something. I had a really bad day. My mom sucks. My dad sucks. Can't wait to move out. This place is so boring. Any exploiter is going to view that and say, oh, all right, I know what this kid needs in their life. Hey, I've had a really tough time growing up, too. I 100% know exactly what it is that you're going through. How can I help you? We should be friends. And this is an outlet for our kids. So, again, making sure that you're talking to your kid about using the social medias, but setting their profiles to private. There's no reason that your child should be talking to anybody if they have not met them in person, if they have not shook that person's hand and looked them in the eye. And that's what I teach all across the board to a lot of high schools. The safe and unsafe location of information sharing. Again, this comes into factor when we're talking about Snapchat. You can have Snap Maps on. This shows exactly where you're at within the county. There's no reason that our children should be posting that type of stuff and becoming so vulnerable in that way. Sexting, video chats, again, this is where they're sharing either nude photographs of themselves and sending it on the web. Internet usage, we know that any image that gets posted up, right, it's going to be there forever. So again, this is something that I harp on with a lot of the juveniles that I talk to, is don't send those photos. I don't care how much you love that person, and they would never do you dirty. Don't send the photos. They are there for forever. But they deleted it, or I sent it on Snapchat and it disappears. I can guarantee you, that person either took a screenshot of it, used a different phone to take a photo of it. Don't send them. And feel comfortable looking through the internet history. A lot of times, we come across some parents who kind of feel like, well, I want to let them know, you know, be their own person. We're here to protect our children, and it's our roles as parents to make sure that that's occurring. So feel comfortable looking through the internet history and asking your children about certain things that they're accessing. Hey, I saw that you were on the phone last night. Heard that you were on the phone last night at midnight. What's up with that? Setting restrictions. Phones, you know, could even, don't charge phones in your room. Phones stay in the kitchen. We charge phones in the kitchen. There's no reason that a child should be on the phone at 2:00 AM in the morning. So kind of just common sense things like that. Sexting and sextortion, we deal with this a lot. So, again, this is the phone, the photos being sent over the phone. Once it's sent, it's going to, it will always be there. So it's important to explain to your child about the consequences of those phones. A, a lot of times, those photos will get distributed, and that could lead to bullying. Those photos get sent to an entire school. We've had lots of cases like that, where a nude photo is taken of somebody, and then before you know it, the entire history class has that photo. That's embarrassing for the victim. It's bullying. You know, we're talking then about like potential suicidal tendencies of that child who has to recover from this trauma that they just went through. So talking to your kid about certain things like that. Actions have consequences, right? Embarrassment, it is embarrassing. It's embarrassing for a 16-year-old to come forward and talk to mom or dad about, hey, I messed up, I sent this photo. But as a guardian of a child, you need to be, hopefully, that safe place for that kid to come to you and feel comfortable to tell you, I messed up, I need help. Okay, cool. Let's figure out what we need to do. And then not only that, sometimes we don't think about it, but a 14-year-old sending a nude photo to another 14-year-old. Now we're kind of talking about, hey, you're distributing some sexual abuse material here of a child. So we're looking at, you know, not every case, but sometimes is this going to be like a criminal matter? Because now you're kind of teetering as far as distributing any type of CSAM. Sextortion, so this occurs, again, we see a lot of this on social media. What happens is a child will engage in a friendship or a relationship with somebody and send a nude photo of themselves. Sometimes that predator will come back and say, okay, I have this nude photo of you. If you don't do A, B, and C, like meet me at the park, and we're going to have sex, or if you don't send me more photos, then I'm going to let your mom and dad know exactly what you're doing, and I'm going to send them the photos that you have shared with me already. This is terrifying for a child, right? So this is something that we see that's very common. How do we avoid this? Talk to your child. And I can't express enough the communication with your children. Talk to them about what is going on. Talk to them about what happens if that photo is sent out. Talk to them about, hey, is this a photo that you would be okay with all your school peers seeing? Is this something that you would do face-to-face with this person? So I think, you know, in short summary, it really does come down to empowering your child to know that they own their own body, talking to them about consent, and then also giving them the tools and the knowledge about what is appropriate and what is not appropriate. Reporting and resources, I'll kind of, I will close with this. You can always call 911. We have throughout the county, multiple sexual assault detectives who are available to come and take reports. Patrol will normally respond. That's how our process works. They'll take the report, and then that will get sent to a detective who would reach out at a later time. Our Family Justice Center, this is a huge tool within our county, fairly new, but it is located on Loma Vista. This is their general phone line. And this is not just for victims of sex crimes. This is for victims of all types, domestic violence, human trafficking, sex crimes. If you need legal assistance, they do case management. They try to empower, provide counseling, access to advocates, and in therapy. So I can't harp enough, again, how important our Family Justice Center is into our county. We have one here in Ventura, and then we have another one over in Simia Valley. The QR codes that I added are, the first one is On Watch. So that is where I obtained a lot of the stats that you saw in the age groups. It has activities on there to talk to your children about, and good talking points. So it kind of gets the conversation flowing. And then the second one is the National Children's Advocacy Center, and this has a lot more internet safety tips for teenagers and kids. So if you scanned either one of those, it should directly link you to both of those websites. And with that, I'm pretty sure that's it, yeah. I'll leave that up there. But that's it. And thank you. I really do appreciate you.
Any questions? Chris, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Detective Torres. That's an excellent presentation. I think it's going to be valuable for the city to be able to have those resources available. I did just maybe have one question about, there was a recent incident in Fillmore, and I just wanted to be able to, for people to understand who they can reach out to directly to inquire about that case that we know is ongoing.
Okay. Are you talking about the case involving the individual who worked at the church?
Yes.
So I was actually there that day. That is an ongoing case. It will be taken state. It is a state case. So it's an open case at this time. We are still, the case has, to my knowledge, been filed with our district attorney's office, and they will be going through the court process at that time. I don't have as much, I can't provide a lot of details because, again, it is an open case. But I think, you know, it's, we live in a time where we truly do have to watch who our children are talking to and who has access to our children.
Absolutely. Yeah. So would you recommend if somebody was trying to look into more information, just contact the district attorney's office?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something. Thank you for giving this presentation. And I just wanted to say, I mean, my wife is also a mandatory reporter. And one day, I found this website, and all these kids were missing, and a lot of them were local, Fillmore, Santa Paula, Pyron, tons of kids. I was like, wow, why isn't anybody saying this? And she kind of like chuckled, because most of them are still at home. It's just their traffickers found them online, and so they have to report them as missing them, and they're still actually at home. And a lot of us get fooled or complacent. I know I did. When I was growing up, people were being abducted, like in the white van, or people, you know, like that. She goes, now, now people are being abducted in their own homes, under their own, they're still at home, and they're being trafficked from home.
Yeah.
And people don't even realize that their children are being trafficked while they're at home. And it's important, like you said, to monitor that, because they could be going through something parents don't know. They think, oh, traffickers are on the streets, prowling the streets, when they're actually in their own homes, being trafficked.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. And in reference to human trafficking, I have a passion for it. So myself and my supervisor worked human trafficking for a long time, and that's where I had just ended for the last four years. And you're absolutely right. We have this idea that human trafficking is the movie Taken, and it's the white van, and it's the zip ties on windshield. And, you know, you're absolutely right. It's happening within our homes. It's happening in our kids' rooms where they're having internet access and being contacted by traffickers there. The same thing goes along the lines as far as any type of sex crimes and child exploitation.
Yeah. It was an eye-opener. She also gives presentations similar to what you do. And I was like, wow, I never even realized this. I was thinking they're out there in vans or taking our kids. And she's like, the statistics are really leaning the other way, where they're, these guys find the kids and offer them money or cell phones or whatever they don't have, and traffickers are being trafficked right in their home. And thank you for giving this presentation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure. I'll go next. Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Just to reiterate what I said, excellent presentation. We appreciate you being here. And I'm going to, you know, figure out a way to make sure that I share your presentation.
Yeah.
So that as many eyes in the community can see it. And I'm just wondering, I know you're bringing this here to council. Is this something I really hope that you're taking to school districts, to, you know, assemblies or something? There's something about hearing it from you and seeing you in this presentation that I hope clicks, you know, definitely clicks with us. And so I just wanted to see if, you know, what, are you part of an outreach team? You know, or do you work with a nonprofit that gets this out?
Our sex crimes unit is kind of in, hopefully, in the works of doing a little bit more community outreach, but we are always available. So if there is ever any schools who wanted to have us come in and do a presentation, we do that. Our Human Trafficking Task Force, which is local here, also does the same thing. So you can always reach out to me, and I can connect you to them. They do a lot of community outreach as well, coming to events, going to schools. So we're always willing to put forth presentations for our community, and that's something that, you know, we'll definitely be involved in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that this is such an important message to get out there. I was going to inquire about your outreach, but I think you've answered that. So with regard to the Family Justice Centers, I actually worked there, worked for the DA's office when it was being established. But can you elaborate a little bit more on the Family Justice Center as far as it being a one-stop shop?
Yes.
For, you know, and the benefit to victims?
Yeah, absolutely.
For it being the one-stop shop.
So the Family Justice Center, very well put, is a one-stop shop. If you are a victim of any type of crime and you need assistance, but maybe you're not necessarily at a point where you want law enforcement involved, that's okay. You can go in, in business hours, and talk to somebody, and they will direct you to whomever it is that you need to be connected with. So, for instance, if you were a domestic violence victim, but you weren't ready to come forward to report the crime occurring, that's okay. You can go in, you can talk, you can start counseling, start therapy, start talking to the advocates, who would be able to help you and build you up, strengthen you, give you the tools of like, hey, we're here to support you. Like, we can get this going. I know that they will give clothing to kids who maybe are in need of clothes, backpacks, if you don't have diapers for your kid, things along those lines. If you need some type of civil legal help, they'll assist you on that. So it is not necessarily like, hey, I'm going to this place. I need to have a law enforcement case open. You can go in, and you can talk, and they can kind of direct you to whomever you need to speak to.
Thank you.
Detective Torres, this was very informational. I was wondering if you can provide the city, our city manager with the slideshow, and then maybe we can pass it around and...
Yeah, absolutely.
And then that way, we can get it out more.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation will be 5B, Patriot River Bottom Cleanup Outcome, presented by our Fillmore Police Chief, Lalo.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Let me minimize this. Okay, so I will be going over the Santa Clara River Bottom Cleanup. That's kind of been in the works for a couple of months now. So I'll get to it, and I'll be brief. Let me see here. All right. So the River Bottom Cleanup, when we were in discussions with the city manager and staff, we, you know, we knew that it was going to be a huge undertaking. So we kind of tried to trim it down a little bit and work it into two different phases, if you will. So Phase One, we started with back in May, and the thought was that we get a dumpster from E.J. Harrison out there, which we did, and a dirt lot out there on A Street and Gasaway Drive, or near there. And we said, hey, let's put a dumpster out there and see what kind of cooperation we get from our homeless population, right? And the dumpster was out there for about a week. And as you can see from the photo, they actually were very helpful, and they were hands-on. They helped as much as they could. The dumpster got filled with quite a bit of trash, but we knew that that was not going to be enough. There were still a lot of debris out there, a lot of old abandoned camps and trash that needed to be picked up. So the conversation started early on with staff about contracting with Patriot Environmental, who's got extensive experience in doing these kinds of cleanups. So we looked into it. Obviously, Dave, staff, and Tiffany were involved in negotiations with Patriot. Eventually, they got the contracts approved, and then that gave us the ability to go out and do the cleanups, which we did. And that was kind of like our Phase Two of the cleanup. So once the contract was signed, and we had that contract with Patriot, our deputies went out and did a site survey on July 31. out and did a site survey on July 31st. And that survey was kind of a two-pronged approach. One is our deputies went out there and figured out where the camps were, who was living down there. And then it also allowed us to identify anybody that was down there, which is, it's usually our normal, everyday people that we do contact down there. They located 11 camps, some were unoccupied or abandoned, and obviously numerous debris, debris fields throughout the, the river bottom area. They did locate obviously three strategic areas, if you will, placed dumpsters to make the cleanup a lot easier as we went down there. I think, let me see. So that was on July 31st. And then the River, Phase Two cleanup started on August 8th and 9th. It was a two day cleanup. As you can see from the photos, there was a lot of, and this is just some of the photographs, but there was an extensive amount of trash and abandoned camps that were down there. Patriot, again, I can't give them enough credit, they are super organized and they were literally just, they're very efficient in what they do. So they did a great job. We initially didn't know how long the cleanup was going to take. We thought maybe it'd get done in one eight hour period, but it was a huge undertaking to say the least. And so they came back out a second day. Here's another picture of just some other areas that were cleaned up. Couple more slides and then some, some of the photographs of the dumpsters and the trucks. In a nutshell, what they had to do because of the remote area that the trash was in is hand crews actually physically went down there, they gathered all the trash, they, they divided the trash from the needles and, and substance waste that can't go in normal trash. They hauled it up to the trucks and then from the trucks, they took it to the trash bins that were set up at three different locations. So it was a, it was a very difficult task for them. So at the end of the cleanup, the results were 80 yards of trash. So they don't measure per weight per se, it's a yardage, is the way they measured it. So they filled two 40 yard bins, which was 80 yards of trash, obviously one drum of bio waste and one container of sharps and needles. So just to give you an idea as far as the weight, I mean, they, 30 yards is about anywhere between three and a half or two and a half, three tons to five tons, depending on what you actually, the type of waste that you're, that you're picking up. So it was a significant amount of waste that, that was cleaned up there at the, at the river bottom. So that is, in a nutshell, the cleanup. I know it's been a couple of months in the works and I just want to say to the, you know, our community members that are here and those that are listening, or those that will view this after the fact is that I know council members get, you know, emails and phone calls on a regular basis about concerns that community members may have. And I just want our community members to know that, you know, those concerns don't go unnoticed. Council members do communicate with city manager and staff and myself. And although it might not seem like they're being worked out on or looked at, trust me, their, your guys' concerns do get relayed to us and, and they, they are doing their job and we're trying to do the best we can with the, you know, with what we got, so.
Chris, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I was just curious about future monitoring of potential trash buildup. Obviously this is a huge undertaking built up over potentially several years. And we wouldn't want it to return to that sort of state. But would the homeless lays on be reporting back on any continued buildup down in the riverbed?
Yeah, we're going to continue to do this. Yeah, you're right, this is, I don't, I don't believe, at least not since I've been here, has there ever been a cleanup of this magnitude. And so the buildup was kind of significant. Obviously it's, 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 this isn't a free service, so it does cost money. And so one of the things that we're going to look at from the city's standpoint is to keep track of that trash that's down there, keep track of our, our population and basically just stay on top of them and ensure that we don't get to this point where we're doing cleanups that are expensive, you know, every, you know, every couple of months, if you will. So yeah, we're going to stay on top of it and do the best we can. We're trying to minimize the, the amount of trash that's down there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Chief. Just, just want to make a comment that, you know, great job that Patriot did. And, you know, I, as living, a person that lives down the Riverwalk neighborhood, it was also done pretty quietly. I, you know, I didn't notice things happening during this period of time and I'm not sure how many others did too. So I, I appreciate sort of that, that was, it wasn't a disturbance to the neighborhood and, and that everything went really smoothly. And yeah, that we're going to, you know, continue to monitor it to that, to, you know, to keep it as clean as we can.
Yeah, yeah, of course, like I said, I, sorry, they, they do a great job, they're efficient, they know what they're doing, they're in and out, minimal foot traffic. And, and, you know, again, I want to make sure that our residents know and we get calls every once in a while. If they locate trash or abandoned property or things of that nature, between bushes or trees in the neighborhood, by all means, call us. We work with Troy and his staff and if we can clean it up, we will. Sometimes if we can store it, if it's valuable property or we can identify who it belongs to, we'll, we'll take care of it that way too. But by all means, call us and we'll, we'll work something out.
Right, yeah, and thank you for that.
I just wanted to say thank you to Chief and to staff and to everybody who participated. Thank you for going out there and keeping track and?
Thank you.
And I want to just reiterate the same message, you know, we are really thankful for the work that you coordinated and for those that participated in the cleanup. Did they leave a dumpster down there as it went down permanently that the homeless will continue to use? Or is that, okay?
No, those are all, they're all Patriot property.
Okay.
But that's something that we can discuss with staff if, if, you know, down the road, if placing the dumpster somewhere would be beneficial.
And then can you address the issue of the Arondo or the bamboo? Do you know anything about it being cleared out? Is there a timeframe on that that you're aware of?
No, Fire Chief Gorola would be the one that handles that. And I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have no information on that.
That's right, no problem. We'll check, Chief Gorola.
Yeah, I was going to say that Christina said that there was no, no calls to the city, but I know there was hazmat, people called in hazmat suits. And so the city did receive a couple of calls. But thank you Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is public comments. We have set a three minute limit on public comments. The green light comes on, you have three minutes. And then when 30 seconds are left, you have a yellow, the yellow light will come on. First speaker is Thomas H.
Hi, I just wanted to save, I completely forgot to say this the last time that I came here. I just wanted to say thank you to Christina Reyes, Vea Senor, and also Albert Mendez for attending the Pride Resource Festival at the One Step Center. Thank you. So far they have only been, they have been the only members of the city council that have acted diplomatically towards LGBTQ plus community here in town and we appreciate their support for that. I also want to thank the school district for not cutting ties with One Step Alavés. It is very, it is a very important program for teens. It helps to give them a place to feel safe and to be their own unique selves when they can't be at school or even at home. As you all know, there is a small yet vocal minority in this town that has been trying to take this away from the youths and it is all just ignorance and bigotry. They won't say it is, but it absolutely is. I hope the school district continues to look past all the ugly stuff that has been said. And I also hope that at some point in the near future, the rest of the city council members can do the same. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Norma Perez Sanford.
Hello.
Hello.
So I'm Norma Perez Sanford, live at 602 Island View Street. And the gentleman was saying about how expensive that service was to do the cleanup. And I'm here to offer free community cleanup service for the, I would like to adopt a Third Street cement steps stairwell over there where people do exercises up and down. But there's a lot of trash sometimes. Right now it's a little bit more cleaner, but there's still a great need for just more, more, for it to be cleared. And also I believe the steps, there's a fence on the bottom that needs to be fixed so that people don't go in there. And also there needs to be lights, especially with this weather. I would like to go exercise in the evening, but it's so dark, pitch black out there. And so if there's any way I can request that, if there's anything I need to do, start fundraising or anything, big street lamps would be great. And like I said, I would like to, and there's a group of us that we're interested in cleaning up that area, maybe at least once a month or something. So I don't know if I can request any supplies like bags, a trash bin there at the bottom or at the top, so that I could clean up, you know, syringes or whatever maybe out there. Any comments?
Norma, sorry, I just wanted to make one comment on the, have to get back to you on other things, but about the, about the cleanup, just, just knowledge, knowing that another group on Saturday mornings, I think SerOptimus is doing cleanup along the bike path. I wonder if some kind of combination might be able to be done. It just came into my mind right now. I just know every Saturday morning.
Or the Lions Club also.
Is it Lions? Oh, I'm sorry.
I did send a message, but I didn't think, I'd been so busy. You know, this is the second week of school, so hard. But I'll check my Facebook again to see if anybody sent anything back because, but there is a big group that would like that area to, to be used by citizens, good citizens, not just people bunching up in there and trying to intimidate others. Okay, so I refuse to be intimidated by anybody. So I just would like to be able to use those steps for my exercise. I'm on my way, here goes. I signed up for the LA Marathon and I need to practice. So I need those steps, really badly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We're moving on to item number seven, City Council Reports, Recommendations and Comments. Chris, do you have anything?
I don't have anything particular, although as a follow up question maybe for Troy, have, if you hadn't gotten any reports of trash buildup around the Third Street stairs, how would that normally be handled or how, how can the city normally be involved with that? Because it doesn't seem like if somebody sees needles that they should have to pick it up, they can call, hopefully somebody at the city who has at least more experience, maybe the police department to take care of that.
Hi, yeah, Chris, last week we received a complaint, actually from the police department in regards to that. I think it came from the school resource officer. Went out there and we do have a landscape contractor that's supposed to be maintaining that area. I went out there and it was overgrown. So it created little pockets where people could hide out, do things, you know, not be seen. Obviously they were leaving trash and whatnot. Had them go out and clean it up and, and really, you know, take care of the over vegetation. And then they told me it was ready. I went out, I wasn't happy with it. I think it was still overgrown, so I made them go back out there another day and, and hack more of the over vegetation. But when I went out on yesterday to, to take a look at it, it's clear, you have clear sight lines all the way to the bottom of the stairs. There is a trash can at the bottom of the stairs and, you know, all, the graffiti is going to be a regular problem. We do go out and clean up the graffiti regularly, but it, it is going to be an ongoing issue. But as far as, you know, going out there and cleaning up, we do have people that go out there and clean up and, and take care of that trash.
Sherri, yes, just wanted to make a couple of comments. I want to thank the mayor for opening today's council meeting in honor of Ernie Morales. He is, he was a pillar of this community for many years, I should say decades. And if anyone knew Ernie, they knew that, that he was just a man who was of his word and who always, even when he wasn't acting as a public servant, and I think he acted as a public servant for many years, being on city council and mayor throughout, throughout his, those terms, he was always an active citizen. And particularly in these later years, Ernie and his wife Becky Morales were very active in our, our Active Adult Center and getting it, getting it going and ensuring and helping seniors to know those resources. And so maybe as we move forward, this is just, just a comment right now, it's not a, anything for a council to, to act on, but we can think of a way of honoring Ernie in a way that's significant here in the community. So I'll, we'll, we'll talk some more about that. But our condolences to Becky and all of his family and to the community. He's, it's a big loss. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you two Mayor for opening the meeting and saying those kind words about Ernie. And I too, he lived on our street for many years and he was a pillar, like Christina said, of this community. He did many things. I know his father, I believe, was responsible for putting the F up on the hill up here. So I just wanted to mention that and wanted to give my condolences to his family as well.
Two things. First of all, there was an editorial in the Star this past week with regard to legis, or something that may be on the ballot, hopefully will be on the ballot in November of 2024, that will prohibit the overreaching control that Sacramento has on the building and development of housing in local communities. And I don't know if I can pick Kevin's brain on it real quick, if you remember what it was called. I left my piece at home, or Tiffany. Anyway, I'll address that next week, but watch for that information, that's going to be huge. But it's going to require signatures being signed to get it on the ballot in 2024. So it, and it's, I think it'll be a game changer for what we're facing with regard to housing. And then, yeah, that's, I'll come back with that next week.
Okay, we move on to item number eight, Consent Calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved?
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion, I have a second. Jordy, will you take a roll call please?
Councilmember Gorola?
Yes.
Mayor Prosen, Vea Senor?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brogi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, now for my, my word salad. Moving on to item number nine A, New Business. Further extension of the city of Fillmore's local emergency declaration resulting from sewer line collapse, designation of the city's agent to the government's Office of Emergency Resources, approval amendment to agreements with Toro and Vieira, and appropriation of funding.
I will try to be brief. Good, good evening council, Mayor and residents of Fillmore. This item, there's a lot into it, so I will kind of get, get a brief summary of what we're asking. Then I'll go into a short presentation and then, you know, summarize what the request is. We, we are required to extend the declaration of local emergency every 60 days or so, so we're asking for that to be extended. We are applying for emergency funds through FEMA and COWES. And so we're required to have a designation of agency signatures. And so that is the second item there. We're asking for the council to approve a first amendment of Toro's contract, asking for an additional $50,000. And a second amendment to Ferrera's contract, asking for an additional $500,000. Now, there have been delays in the project along the way and there was some recent delays. So as the staff report states, there, the anticipated time that we were going to be able to take the bypass pumps offline was expected to be August 24th. And that has now been pushed back to September 8th. So about two weeks plus. And for every week that extends, that costs the city extra money, roughly about $132,000 every single week for the extra pumping. So just to kind of set the table there for what that, what that means for us. Let me just bring up this presentation and go through it real quick. It's four slides long, so I don't want to gloss over it because it is important information for you to understand with regards to what we're looking at. So this is a project summary. I've, I've outlined Ferrera- this is a project summary. I've outlined Ferrera, basically their emergency response, the contract amount, if approved with the 500,000, would put them at 2,987,000 and change. And we're still anticipating some extra costs of 280,000, and that's what I just described as far as the extra delays is pushing that. So Toro, their original contract was 3,575,000. We asked for 350,000 in contingency. Now we're asking for an additional 50,000. Just this morning, we got notified that they were holding basically about a $200,000 hit on the extended project. And the extension of the project comes really from the boring operation of, you know, trying to run that encasement underneath Highway 126 and running into a lot of rocks and boulders, and the alignment had to be adjusted. We had to upsize the encasement. So after pulling a 38-inch steel encasement through the majority of the street, we had to upsize to a 48-inch and pull the 38-inch out. So there's been delays trying to figure out what's the best course of action, what's the most cost-effective course of action in that. Phase two is just, it is an estimate right now. So, you know, where it says contract amount, I don't really have a contractor or whatnot, but it's just an estimate if we were to move forward with phase two. We also have costs with Veolia, Rainforent, and Patriot for emergency cleanup, Rainforent for the pumps and the rentals, and then Veolia for their original emergency response. And then we're looking at doing a request for hazard mitigation for epoxy coating the lines or the sewer manholes. So there could be an additional project or expenditure at some point. And let me get into the right side of the table here. So if you look at the Ferrera and Toro contracts, we're expecting to get reimbursed 93.75%. The city's expected contribution is 6.25%. So the application is super critical as far as us getting everything in and getting it approved. We've already been approved theoretically for the project and the money. Now it's just a matter of paperwork and whatnot. There is a possibility that some of the line items on the Toro contract, they may try to disallow or at least say they're not going to reimburse at the full 93.75%. And in that case, we would be reimbursed at a 75% total. So it's hard to kind of feel that. Right now, we've followed all of their guidelines and what they've been asking us to do to make sure that we have, we can maximize our reimbursement. In this scenario, if we were to get full reimbursement at the 93.75%, the city would be looking at, you know, about 468,000 for those two contracts. Then we have a phase two, which hasn't really, you know, gotten off the ground yet, but we would be looking at getting a significant portion there. And then Veolia, Rainforent, that also would be a 93.75% reimbursement rate. So we could look at, you know, really total paid by the city being under $1 million, total paid by the FEMA CAL OES grants for the emergency funding, roughly about $12 million, and that includes that phase two, which hasn't taken flight yet. There are portions of the phase one that we can also account for as hazard mitigation and whatnot, but I wanted to make sure we kind of divided that as much as possible so we didn't risk losing reimbursement or holding up getting reimbursement. So it's another reason why we kind of kept the Ferrera contract separate from the Toro contract. So, okay. And just to kind of break down a little bit, you know, more detailed as far as this, so the original Ferrera contract was 600,000, and that was really just kind of get the process started. We knew that wasn't going to be enough, but we had no idea what really to budget for. As I indicated, every day, we're paying more and more money on the pumps. And for, you know, every week, it's about 132,000 extended. So we've had to extend that. And we're expecting to have to extend, you know, a third amendment at some point. But, you know, we are really, really, really hoping that we get the bypass pumps shut off by September 8th, which would then effectively, you know, close out the Ferrera contract. We could get rid of the Freiman traffic control, and then it would be down to the road repairs that Toro could do. But the total estimated cost would pay to Ferrera based on the projections, it's about 3.2 million, almost 3.3. And then the expected reimbursement is 3 million, and the expected city cost is about 200,000. Same thing for Toro, original contract, 3.575 million, First Amendment, 50,000. I'm expecting to maybe get some additional requests in there, because like I said, we just got a $200,000 request this morning. But between now and October 3rd, when they are expecting to wrap up the paving, I'm just leaving a little bit of cushion in there, anticipating that we might get a little bit more. So the total estimated cost paid to Toro would be $4 million based on those assumptions. Expected reimbursement would be 3.7 million, expected city cost being 251,000. So just kind of laying out there what we are expected to get as far as the reimbursement goes. And it is, I mean, you can read the staff report of all the details of what's been going on. But it's important to note that we're trying to push it forward as quickly as we can. We do understand that we're going down a path of getting grant funding, emergency grant funding. But I'm not trying to use that as a way of delaying the project. We want to get this done and wrapped up. I know the contractors do as well. Everybody's tired of being out there. So, you know, it is what it is with the timeline and the unexpected things that we've run into. But again, the request is to go ahead and authorize the additional expenditure, authorize the extension of the emergency, and then the signature authorizations so that we can apply for the grants and, you know, have the proper people be authorized to sign for those things. So with that, if you have any questions?
Chris, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Troy, thank you for the update. I appreciate it. I have one question just about the recent rains, which I've been told had not caused any additional delays as far as buildup of the water table, which I know was a major factor in delaying kind of the start of the project, just pumping water out of the ground. Can you verify that? And I assume that the pumping cost that we've already accumulated was a major factor in helping prevent any more delays?
Yeah, so it's, well, it's a good question. And it's actually the basis of the $200,000 request that we got from the contractor today was basically the extension of the pumping and the shoring that's already in the ground for that purpose. And so, I mean, there may be justification for the request. It doesn't make it sit any easier for us. But, you know, impressively, the trench held up very well with the rains. We did not see a surge in groundwater coming in. They've been consistently pumping 24/7 and de-watering the area. And because of that, we haven't seen any surge. There hasn't really been any, you know, enough time for the groundwater to come down from the mountains into that area yet. So at some point, we may see a surge, but I don't know, because it was, you know, a very short event. It was intense, but it was a short event, so.
Thank you.
Christina?
Yeah, just one comment. Thank you. You know, great comprehensive staff report, Troy, like just lining everything up. And I appreciate the presentation with the numbers. It's very clear what needs to be done. And also just highlighting the, you know, FEMA and CAL OES reimbursement. I mean, that's critical. That's huge for us, you know, looking at an $11 million bill versus a less than million dollar bill. So that's really important. So thank you and staff and everyone for their work on securing those. I just wanted to point out too, I think it's important that that 75% reimbursement on phase two is pretty great, because I mean, I'm under the impression that that's sort of above and beyond just the correction. That money helps us to help secure our sewer line, you know, for the future and that sort of thing. So to have that 75% reimbursement is very good.
Yeah, and that's part of the program in what they, they look for opportunities that can prevent future reoccurrences of the same type of damage. And that's exactly the type of project that would really prevent this from occurring again. If we could do that phase two, go down D Street and not have a very flat, like extremely low-flow line running underneath Highway 126 where access is limited, and our ability to go and maintain, you know, just by even popping a manhole, is limited to certain restrictions based on Caltrans. If we were able to cross the, you know, the highway at D Street, all of that goes away. Like, we don't have to worry about the maintenance relying on Caltrans, because we would be crossing under, and the manholes would be on either side, and we'd be able to mitigate that problem.
Yeah. Well, first, what month did you start working here, Troy?
December.
Yeah.
Are you adding up all the disasters?
Yeah. She's thinking maybe you're jinxed.
No, stop. No, no. It's the opposite. What I'm thinking, what I'm thinking is, you're here for a month, and then you get hit with this project. And I think you've done a superb job spearheading this and getting things moving, especially looking at these numbers. And things are getting done, and it's, you know, we have delays, things that aren't foreseen. And I know it's frustrating for the community or for anybody who's driving down the 126 from wherever. It's frustrating when we get to one lane. But I have to tell you, every time I go by, I think, thank God we hired Troy. So anyway, I wanted to say that. And then I wanted to point out too, well, unless you have remarks, before we make a motion, and I don't want to overstep our mayor here, but.
When have we referred?
We actually have three staff recommendations. There's only two listed, but we actually had three, because on page three of the report, there was another recommendation to request to continue the.
The emergency?
The declaration of local emergency.
Right.
Yeah. So we have three. That wasn't referenced in the last paragraph is my point. I'll make sure that when we. Never mind.
I showed her the front page.
Okay. Very good. I think we are. Thank you.
Albert? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion. I think she can just say one through five, can't she?
Okay. All right, I'll take that on then. Yeah, so I recommend that city councils adopt numbers one through five of the staff report.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion. I have a second. Georgie, will you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gorola?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viasenor?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brogie?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number nine B, Approval of the Ventura County Stormwater Permit Implementation and Cost Sharing Agreement.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Mayor Protem. Community of Fillmore, this is the big acronym, NPDES, the National Pluton Discharge Elimination System. We've been under these stormwater controls since 1992, so it's been a minute. And they keep getting more and more aggressive, is what I've noticed. But it's protecting our water, so that's a good thing. This is bringing forward an update to the Ventura County Stormwater Permit Implementation and Cost Sharing Agreement, which we'll just call the agreement. This is an agreement between basically all the cities in Ventura County, plus the county itself, plus Ventura County Watershed Agency. So a multi-agency agreement to fund and implement stormwater requirements that come to us through the National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Program. And of the overall program, which has a lot of moving parts and monitoring and different things, it's about a $3.16 million budget that the Ventura County Stormwater Quality manages. And of all of that budget, Fillmore's a little less than 1%. We're 0.71% of the entire budget. And the better news is that we also have benefit assessment units that are collected through the Watershed Protection District, which is a stormwater quality tax that we all pay. And so they charge that tax to all of the cities and the county residents, and then they funnel it back to the cities that the residents pay into. So the good citizens of Fillmore are already paying to offset our cost share in this big implementation agreement. So it comes down to where we pay between 4,000 and 7,000, depending on the year and what's in the program, what has to happen. This year, it's 4,639. When we did the budget, we actually estimated it would be a little more than that. So that amount is adopted in the NPDS budget and the adopted FY2324 budget. And the attorneys and everybody have reviewed all the agreements, and all of the agencies have come to agreement. And so happy to recommend to you that we approve this agreement and get it back to the county before they go to the Board of Supervisors. And that's my report. I'll entertain questions.
Chris, do you have any questions?
Sorry, no questions.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll move that City Council approved Ventura County Stormwater Permit Implementation and Cost Sharing Agreement.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Georgie, will you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gorola?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viasenor?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brogie?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number 10, Committee, Commission and Board Reports. Chris, do you have anything?
No reports.
Okay. Christina?
No report on my end, Mayor.
Okay. Albert?
No.
Okay. I said, I know, you're next.
Okay.
She's a little feisty tonight.
We held a committee meeting here in City Hall, was it last Monday? Tuesday, last week, regarding the Sierra Northern and Mendocino Rail. And we had a packed house. We had representatives, our Board of Supervisor rep, Kelly Long was here. We had representatives from Santa Paula, and a whole lot of community members here, in addition to the CEO of Sierra Northern, as well as Mendocino, and the staff from Santa Paula that works here at Northern. So it was a full house, and there was a lot of issues that were raised. Because it was agendized as a public hearing, again, it was not a Q and A. So we heard from the constituents with their issues, the Sierra Northern did a PowerPoint presentation that was informative, didn't answer a whole lot of questions that the community had. But I did receive a phone call this morning from the CEO of the Ventura County Transportation Commission, Martin Erickson, and he indicated that he's setting up a separate meeting for himself to meet with, to push things along further. You know, he's hearing what the community is saying, and he wants to have a sit-down, one-on-one with them himself. And his words were, let's, you know, see what we can do about them becoming more neighborly. So, and I wanted to share all that only because the meeting was a success, I think, because of the sheer numbers of people that were involved. And nobody's giving up. So they're working on the issues, the stored rail cars, the rail bikes. So that's my report.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, for that.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number 11, City Manager. City Manager Verbal Report.
A couple items tonight. This Friday, we have our summer cookout. It starts at, really, at 6 o'clock. We have the cardboard boat race at the Aquatic Center. As that's going on, In-N-Out Burger will be having their food there for people who already pre-bought. Then, due to a lack of lifeguards that night, we're removing the flick and float to in front of City Hall. That'll still be at 8 o'clock that night. The really good news about Friday is we're going to be able to open three open sessions for swimming. And it's going to be limited to 60 people per session. So we have, session one will be from 3 o'clock to 3:45. Second session is from 4 o'clock to 4:45 p.m. The third session is from 5 o'clock until 5:45 p.m. We have sent out stuff on social media. We'll put some stuff up on our city webpage, but we're asking to register. Those who register will be able to get in. If you walk up and there's room, we will let you in as well. We have minimal staff. That's why we need to do it in three sections, so people can get out there, experience the pool. Now it's been updated. And the last item, just a note, we sent it out in the water bills, the people, that the approved water rate changes will be coming into effect on September 1st of 2022. of 2023. Uh, these charges will be seen beginning in the October billing statements. And again, uh, it's not a, a, a unit rate any longer, you would now be charged 25 dollars and 13 cents, it's a minimum charge, and then how many units you use will be charged 3 dollars and 14 cents. So now people actually have, uh, will be rewarded for conservation, if you will. So in the past, if you're, you're only using, uh, six units of water, you're still paying for 10. So now you'll be able to, uh, control your bill a lot more by the new rates that council adopted a few months ago, and that's what I have.
Can I, uh, ask Dave a question about that one? Thanks, Dave. I know when we had this discussion a few months ago, pre-summer, and we delayed it to September, we had talked about, um, as this was rolling out, or when the, the change in, uh, how we calculate the rates that goes into effect, about some education, maybe even a flyer or a one-pager about, these are the top five things you can do to conserve water, did that, um, has that been included, or can that be included, uh, English, Spanish, in the water bill?
Yeah, we can take a look at adding some conservation items to that bill, not a problem.
Anything else? Okay. With that, we're going to adjourn the meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. Meeting is adjourned.